Good morning and welcome. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Right.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Bag.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you, Lord God, and we thank you. We thank you that you are merciful and kind. We love you, we adore you, and we bless your holy name. We thank you, Lord God, for the things that you have blessed us with, for the things that you're doing now and the things that you are going to do. Father God, we repent of any sin that we have committed knowingly and unknowingly. And we thank you for the blood of Jesus that was shed, that we may be reconciled to you. And so, Father God, as we come this morning, we ask for your guidance, Lord God. We thank you for the opportunity to serve your kingdom, to serve you in the earth, Lord God, and we pray that your will be done in the earth. We thank you for your guidance. We thank you that you know the way that we take, and we thank you that our steps are ordered by you. So we ask your continual blessings upon this city, Lord God, your continual blessings upon our mayor, our councilor, God, our city workers, our entire city. We thank you, Lord God, for the ability to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do, and we will forever give you all the praise, all the honor and glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on January 10th.
If I wasn't here, I'm not doing it. Somebody?
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 6 through January 12.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Are there any proclamations and commendations today? None? Okay. Item 8 is unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance amending fiscal year budget 23. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It transfers $337,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, to pay for the agreements with Orchestra Partners Development LLC and Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC. These agreements were authorized last week by resolution numbers R-09-23 and R-10-23. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is another ordinance authorizing conveyance of property, which was also presented last week for first reading. Derriman Supply Company has offered to pay $550,000 for building T-3 at the Air Depot. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 502 Henry Street in District 3. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on December 13th. There is a recommendation from the building official to table the resolution for an additional 30 days. What is the pleasure of the council?
This is, this, okay, all right, so let's, I move forward that we table for 30 additional days.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for an additional 30 days.
Item 9, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of. A resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 235 North Sixth Street in District 3, Zellamina Johnson and Anjanetta Rogers, who are the heirs of Louveta Owens, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. Based on recent developments and improvements, we're going to ask this case to be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
I have a question too.
Okay.
Brian, so I was meant to do more homework on this. Now, this was like the first black, like hotel in the city or something like that?
Very possible.
Okay.
It's been there a lot.
Because I wanted to, I wanted to know about, was there any improvements or was there a possibility of any rehab could be done?
As far as it being historic?
Yes.
It would have to have already been on the register or going through the process of being registered, and the condition it is today, I doubt that would happen.
Okay.
But if it is, if it does already exist on a historic register, as far as state of Alabama, we can check that. I don't think that's the case, but we can look into that.
If.
But my conversation with the owner has just led me to ask that this be tabled for 30 days.
Okay. If improvements are made, there's still a possibility to have that added on to the register.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move to table this for additional 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2401 West Meagan Boulevard and 402 North 24th Street in District 6, Joel Byron Neal Shirley II, subject to a mortgage in favor of John Robert McElroy Jr. as personal representative of the estate of Velna T. McElroy, assigned to McElroy Realty LLC, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a commercial building. It's actually connected to a couple of other commercial buildings that will hear here in just a moment. The, the building you're looking at was constructed in 1900. There are some structural issues and some concerns besides the fact that this, these buildings were built zero lot line, which means they're sitting on their city right-of-way, next to city sidewalks. And just due to the nature of the building and our concerns, we filed condemnation in February of last year. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
I would agree, so I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All righty, so the motion is to adopt the resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 11, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2403, 2405 West Meagan Boulevard in District 6, Xandra Shirley, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves two structures that were connected to the previous structure at 2401, same situation, they were built in 1900. There are some serious structural concerns there, you can see with the walls separating. And again, because of the nature of the building sitting on the city right-of-way, we filed the, the case. Just to remind the council of the situation we faced a few weeks ago, was similar situation at Forest and 12th Street, where building collapsed into the street. We also had property that was already condemned on Wall Street that recently burned. There's a possibility of, of collapse there. We're dealing with some very old buildings in Gadsden. We just asked that the public notify us if they see some concerns or were concerned. We have a lot of vacant commercial buildings. It is not against the law to have a vacant or own a vacant commercial building. It is against the law to not maintain it in a certain manner, though. And if that happens, then we have to step in. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have, so, Brian, I'm not sure if you would know this, or maybe you would, just to kind of help me out here. The grant that the city has or that are available, does, that does not help with these structural damages or repairs that are needed concerning these, that you've sent us today, right?
There is some grant money available, available for some facade improvements in some of our historic downtowns, and Wall Street, by the way, is, is, is registered as historic district as well. There is some facade money available. Facade is just that, it's facade, it's not structural. And we actually have a building on, on Broad Street that we had to bring in a structural engineer recently to help us make some determination, a very large building. And there again, based on the, the history of what we experienced over the last few weeks, we're, we're moving very cautiously forward, but we are looking at all of these structures and if, if there is possibility of collapse and we can make that determination, then we'll file the case. If we need help, we can, we can bring in a structural engineer to, to help us make that, that call. But to answer your question, to my knowledge, there's not any money available through grants for structural issues, but there are for facade.
That we have, gotcha, yeah. I just, some of these buildings, I think, is, is worth trying to save if possible, because maybe the historic, I guess, knowledge of it, for lack of terms, but just trying to see if there was something the city had available. So, all right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12, our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 1405 Kentucky Avenue in District 1, Ronnie Pollard, subject to a mortgage in favor of Community Home Bank Incorporated, being the last known owner. This is for demolition work that has already been performed and the amount is $2,640. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13, our next public hearing is a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. Smokehouse 227 LLC, DBA Smokehouse 227, located at 227 Broad Street in District 3, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14, our final public hearing is a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license to Race Track Alabama Incorporated, doing business as Race Track 2608, located at 1715 West Grand Avenue in District 6, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I agree and make that motion to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll just offer that this is a large investment by Race Track. It's south there on, it's Highway 77, basically, as you go toward the interstate interchange, it's on the right-hand side of the road. It's going to be a great addition to Gadsden, Natala, and Edgewall County, and we're very grateful for Race Track, for choosing that location and for investing millions of dollars in that, in that spot, and we look forward to having them as neighbors here in Gadsden and Edgewall County.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Mr. President, this project was presented to us originally, I think, three, four years ago. So, just general point of, to make the point that a lot of these commercial development projects take a long, long time and a lot of effort, and there's a lot of hurdles to overcome, so I'm glad to say this one, it'll be a good tax base for the city, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is a resolution expressing support for a challenger center. This is to endorse and support a challenger learning center to be located in Gadsden. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business is item 16. I don't believe we have any new business today. Item 17 is department reports, committees, boards, et cetera. Josh, this is usually your time. Do you have anything from this morning, since we do have weather? And tell us a little bit about our efforts to help our friends in Selma, if you will, please, sir, and the weather radios.
Absolutely. So, we have a threat of severe weather locally. It'll be overnight, which typically is, it's, the way it always happens here, it's usually overnight. Late Wednesday night into Thursday morning, between the hours of 3:00 AM and 9:00 PM, we'll have the potential for 60 mile an hour wind gusts. There will be a chance of quarter-sized hail, and we do run the risk of tornadoes. So, we encourage everybody, as a baseline, to have at least a weather radio in their home. And to that end, the Emergency Management Agency with the City of Gadsden and other external partners, we're going to be acquiring some weather radios for use in socio-economically depressed areas. It's sad that, you know, it is cost prohibitive for some folks, but with it being even $25, $30, that's, that's a lot of money. That's a prescription. So if we can get some of those radios, get, get them into the hands of the people that need them, I think that's going to be a, a great way to meet that baseline, to, to give them that ability to get the warnings. You know, we, we have the warnings on our smartphones now, you know, and I come from the old generation of, the only way that you got warnings was when you heard the tornado siren go off. And those now are, today are used to let people outdoors know to come indoors. So, we're hoping that this will be able to, to at least give people a little bit more sense of security and, at the same time, provide them an opportunity to get some more public education. As was mentioned by the mayor's office during the pre-council, anyone who's interested in making a donation to help out the folks down in Selma can do, can do so through the local United Way, and they will in turn get it down to, to the folks in Selma. I had the opportunity to, to speak with Ms. Ruth Moffett this weekend several times, and her comments were that, I mean, they are just, they have nothing in certain areas down there. So, if we have the ability to, to help them out, either through, you know, sending down responders or sending monetary donations, they basically are starting at square one. They have nothing left in certain parts of the city. So anything that we can do to try to help them out, we want to do that. We've been fortunate in, in our area that we've, we've only seen a few tornadoes in Edgewall County over the last 10 years. But whenever we have been affected, the folks in Selma, the folks in other counties come help us. So it just stands to reason that they've been affected, we need to be able to go help them. So, with that, just ask you to, to say a special prayer for those folks that, that are down there, they're hurting. There are folks down there trying to meet their needs, and like I told Ms. Ruth over the weekend, you know, this is a marathon, it's not sprint, it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take time. So, just pray that they'll have the endurance and the strength to be able to do all that they need to do, so. Thank you so much for that update and that information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all from departments and committees. We'll move into remarks by mayor and council. I'm going to ask, in lieu of Mayor Ford being out today, I'm going to ask Chief of Staff Brett Johnson if he would come and offer a few remarks, and specifically, I think we talked about this, but I want you to explain the challenger and kind of what that is for us.
Yes, sir, happy to do that. So the Challenger Center, what you approved a resolution of support of, is an opportunity, it's a national program, it's really a nonprofit-based program, but there's a group of stakeholders here in Gadsden who have taken it upon themselves to pursue locating a challenger center in Gadsden, Edgewall County. And so, thanks to the support of the council and with Mayor Ford's support, we are working as best we can with those leaders to find a great location that will work for them in the city limits of Gadsden. It'll be a huge benefit because it's designed to encourage STEM education. The curriculum that is taught in this facility is designed by NASA, and it also, you know, kind of supports and aligns with the state mandated curriculum, which our teachers are , are teaching to our students in Gadsden City and Edgewall County. So initially, it will target 5th through 8th grade students from about a seven-county region in Alabama, and it'll probably draw people as well, you know, from Northwest Georgia and even into Tennessee. But it's a destination educational facility. And the best way I can describe it, it's probably not accurate if Dr. Ray or Dr. Lavender, who's part of that group, would be here, they'd do a better job. But the best way to describe it is like a, think of a mini space and rocket center with a little bit of a different purpose and mission located right here in the city of Gadsden. We see it as an educational venture, but also an economic development venture from the aspect of sending a message about what type of workforce we want to see in Gadsden in the next 20, 30, 40 years. So it's a real exciting opportunity. So that's the Challenger Center. Had a couple other remarks on behalf of Mayor Ford I wanted to share, specifically related to the devastation that Mr. Tanner talked about a little while ago in Selma and South Alabama. As y'all know, Mayor Ford served in legislature for 18 years representing Edgewall County, and he's seen his share, we've all seen our share around here, of what a tornado can do in, in terms of damage. So, as a result of what happened in Selma and seeing, you know, it also, a lot of people don't realize, it also hit areas of Otaga County and the Montgomery area. Mayor Ford reached out to United Way of Edgewall County, and they, we want to say thank you to them because they agreed to help set up a fund on their website so that local residents, you know, we're up here in North Alabama, we've all got things going on, may not be able to physically go down there and help, but at least we can give a dollar, $10, $100, whatever we can spare to, to send to a trusted resource, United Way of Edgewall County, who then has partnered with United Way of Dallas County, which is where Selma is, and then the River Region United Way, to make sure that those funds are getting directly to the most immediate needs in that area. So, he has kicked that off and set that up and is asking anybody who's willing and able to support that effort, please do. The other thing that a lot of people don't realize is Ruth Moffett in the mayor's office is a woman of many talents. And so, you know, she was, she has experience in emergency response, especially through United Way, and she was a public information officer for an emergency entity in the past, and so she has connections throughout the state. And when disasters like this happen, they all tend to reach out to her at some point on the volunteer coordination side, which is a major undertaking in a disaster, especially if you don't have an existing infrastructure to support that. So over the weekend, she basically deployed down to Selma and has given her time, lent it her time to that community to help them set up and establish a volunteer, help me, volunteer?
Volunteer Resource Center.
Resource Center. It's a VRC, I mess up that acronym every time. But it's a big deal because it's helping them get going and get organized, all these people who are expressing interest to help, and making sure their efforts are being directed the best way they can. So, we appreciate Ruth for doing that because I, I know, she didn't have to, but she, it's in her heart to do it. The other thing, just want to say thank you to y'all for approving the budget amendment for the master plan and the Orchestra Partners Plan. Now we're going to be able to kick off the initial meetings, y'all start seeing some progress from that, now that we have the funding to pursue that. First comprehensive master plan for the city of Gadsden in 50 years. So it's going to be a big deal, we'll have several public meetings, there'll be some public surveys, and we're looking forward to getting that out there. And then I also wanted to share something that we put on Facebook, I think at the end of last week, but expressed thanks to Governor Kay Ivey and Highway Director Cooper for issuing some funds to the city of Gadsden to improve congestion at the intersection of Hood Avenue and Meagan Boulevard, right at the foot of the Meagan Bridge. I know anybody who drives through Edgewall County has experienced that. So we have this project now, the sufficient funds will be there to get that underway to improve congestion there, so we're excited about that. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Brett. That is exciting to hear about that. I think this, the previous council approved the expenditures for that intersection at Meagan and Hood Avenue some, what, two, three years ago? Or something like that? And it's? Yeah, that's been a big project that, that has seen its share of challenges and setbacks, so that's a big win. It is, thank you. All right, let's start with District 7. We'll start with Councilman Robinson. You don't have anything today? You sure? I'm positive. Okay. Councilwoman Minatra?
I just want to say thank you. We had a great parade of unity on Friday, and those of us that weathered the cold had a great opportunity to do a lot of smiles and see a lot of children because everybody loves a parade. And then I also want to, just to say thanks to the Ritz Theater. We had a great performance over the weekend for Cat on a Hot Tin Ruth, and we love the Ritz Theater, and we love Wall Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, that, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the mayor's office for their, your efforts with supporting Selma. My good friend Clay Carmichael is a-
My good friend Clay Carmichael is councilman there, and actually, I've already gotten a great report back from him on Ruth's efforts there. He shared with me two really powerful pictures. One was the Volunteer Resource Center signup sheet that she had generated and put out into the community there, and another one was a picture of a home, a private residence, where the United Way sign had just been kind of nailed up on the side of the wall where there was siding missing, so I guess their offices were actually damaged there, and United Way said, "We just want to let everybody know we're still here and we're still helping." So, it was really heartwarming to see the efforts that come around, you know, that emerge out of these tragic situations, you know. Other than that, I just want to say hello to all my fellow council members, I was out last week. I hate that Mayor Clark Ford's not here to welcome me back, but we'll catch him later.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
We're even now.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ditto everything that was stated about Selma, family and friends that are there, from volunteering and those that were also impacted there. There's a young lady here that is doing some efforts. I'll make sure I get all the information before I make that announcement on her efforts. Her family is from there, she's originally from there, and so, but she's here in Gadsden now, and so her family was heavily impacted, and so she did reach out to some nonprofit organizations in the city to seek help, and so we are placing some efforts towards that. Actually, just had a owner of a trucking company call me after we finished pre-council to let me know that he is willing to, he got some trucks to be able to take those items down. So, with that said, I also want to give a great appreciation to WMGJ for their MLK program that was on last night at the Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church with the remarkable speaker of Mr. Kevin Ferguson Jr. Can't really, I mean, words can't express the wonderful speech that he gave to the young people, it was a night of youth for the young people that came out. It was a great attendance. Also, just giving thanks and flowers continuously to the late Mr. Floyd Donald, and then his current staff that is there at the WMGJ that is keeping the legacy going. And then I had an opportunity to also see his daughter, who I haven't seen in quite some time, and so she, they did something new, which was give away community activist awards to some members of the community, and so want to give, again, great accolades to the WMGJ. Also, the former council, Thomas Worthy, had a prayer breakfast on yesterday at the Annie Oak Community Center there, and so for those that was in attendance of that, I apologize for not being able to attend, and so I'm sure that breakfast went well as it normally does every year that it's done. Want to thank everyone that came out also on this past Saturday for the, Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday, for the renaming of Carver Square to Ms. Frances Jelania Harris Square. It was heavily attended as well. I thank the Central Carver Museum, Legacy Museum members that was there to open it up, make sure everything went smoothly and well. I want to thank the family, friends, and those that came out from the community of the renaming, as well as the celebration of Ms. Harris' birthday. Let's see here. Gadsden City High School bowling team will be traveling to Tuscaloosa, Alabama this week for their regional tournament, and so we're asking for those that are excited about this great opportunity of Gadsden City High School Bowling. I know we get behind the football and basketball and baseball, and so this is an opportunity to get behind the bowling team as they again travel to a regional tournament, and I don't think this is their first time going regional. I think they've also did state and some other things, and so financial support, feeding them, or whatever it takes, help these young men and women to be successful in their endeavors there in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. District Three is hosting its first district meeting on today. It'll be held at the Civic Center or the Senior Citizen Building. It starts at 6:00 p.m. with vendors, and then promptly will start at 6:30 going into the meeting. So, all are welcome, each district is welcome, but we will, a lot of the focus will be on some things that have happened in District Three these past couple of weekends, but a lot of the things that also will be spoken about will also benefit the other districts as well. So, again, you are welcome to the District Three district meeting, held at the city's Senior Citizen Building, the Civic Center downtown Gadsden, starts at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith?
Yes, just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Ford and his staff, and the great job that you guys are doing, also to the council, Mr. President, we appreciate you. It's just been a pleasure working with this council and all the great things that are going on in Gadsden right now. Y'all know the saying, if you ever see a turtle on a fence, what, you know, somebody put it there. It's good to ride through Gadsden and see LED lights throughout the city at night now, and just excited about what's going on and what's going to happen in the future. Let's remember the good people down in Selma, keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Lathan?
Thank you, Council President Beck. Let me first say, echo the words of Councilwoman Minatra with respect to the parade on Friday. It was an awesome parade, and we were able to attend Councilwoman Worthy, former Councilwoman Worthy, this prayer breakfast sponsored by the Gadsden Empowerment Initiative. It was a good breakfast, and we congratulate them on a job well done. There are some of the things we were not able to get to, but we made effort to get to those that we could. In light of, and our thoughts and prayers go out to Selma and those other southern cities, those cities in southern Alabama who are experiencing, or victims of the devastating weather that we've experienced, let me say thank you to all of the department heads and to the departments for what you do to make Gadsden the city that it is, but especially to the MEMA for your efforts to keep us safe when these weather events take place. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. I don't have anything today, so if that's all that we have, we now stand adjourned.